Second item is Porazo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item is the transfer, two eighteen, two twenty, Dwayne Avenue back to the city of Schenectady for sale, entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move it.
Move aye.
Second.
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 Second item, Mr. Kosher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any other business to come before the agency?
Motion to adjourn.
Entertain a motion, second. Move by Porazo, second by Kosher, all in favor.
Aye.
Agency stands, adjournment, thank you.
All right, we're doing a slight adjustment in the agenda and now we're gonna start with public service and utilities.
False order of public service and utilities. And she was the one that's got a special day in his family.
Yes, thank you all.
You're welcome.
My wife's thirty-third birthday, I appreciate you all on here to go first.
No problem.
Uh, so what we have before us are two items, both regarding the Erie Boulevard and Knox Street intersection improvement project. Um, the items are related. The first item you see here is the award of a bid to Reifenberg Construction, Inc. of Troy in the amount of two point eight eight million dollars. This was a bid as per typical city standards, as per New York State DOT standards. We received four bids. Uh, the bids were analyzed by our, um, by our consultant, Barton Judas. And we have a recommendation, uh, that the two point eight eight million dollars is acceptable and that we are okay to accept it.
Are there any questions?
And I just, before that's a, the move, I'd just like to speak on the second one just because they are so related. The second one, I would, uh, not want you to move on that, is the second one is our agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation. It's a supplemental agreement authorizing the construction and construction inspection funds for the project.
Did I understand you saying you don't want us to move on?
No, I do, I didn't want to move on the first without knowing about the second.
Oh, okay.
Because that would be a little backwards, but, uh, yeah, so the funding here, we're gonna, I would like to move them together. That's about it, just so you know that the funding is approved by the state and then we also.
Thank you, Chris, when's the, uh, planning of starting the project? Do we have any dates yet?
We are shooting for summer of next year.
Summer of next year.
Uh, but it's not nailed down yet because the city's gonna be doing some infrastructure improvement projects in the area as well regarding to Storm and San Diego.
Very good.
Any further questions? Also, we're moving those things both, entertain a motion to move items one and two under public service and utilities.
So.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell your wife to have a happy birthday.
Thank you.
And her age will be in the minutes.
Oh, yeah, okay, so Mr. LaFon, come for item three, CNS awards for machine supplies and equipment.
The information we're pretty tonight is for the replenishment of our supplies and equipment that we use in the, uh, water department throughout the years, everything require high ends, two risers, valves, uh, couplings. We waited, uh, a little bit late this year to order, what we tried to do is use most of our inventory, so it comes between last year and this year, we save about thirty thousand dollars, used up some of the inventory that we had, so this year's price came in about thirty thousand dollars lower, and she went up some of the inventory and waiting till the end of the year. We do award, uh, to multiple vendors based on the prices of the spent items, so it's not one vendor, what we do is go through the list, it'll be, uh, three different vendors, so recommendations to enter into an agreement to purchase the, uh, the replenish our stock of inventory items.
Are there any questions?
Just one, right? T I sales of Sudbury masks.
Three dollars and something.
Yeah, what is that?
They were low.
What is that?
There were some washers, some little washers, but they were low.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Hang up a bid, two thousand forty cents bid.
Yep, they were the lowest on, uh, on what we needed for the car. We do go through it, um, quite closely and, uh, but work through that.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion?
Pause second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to come before, before public service and utilities?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I've got a call to order city development and planning. First, five items are actually ceremonial resolutions, the first is recognizing epilepsy awareness month.
Just brought to our attention that it was epilepsy awareness month, we think it's a good thing to raise awareness, so we have, uh, representative from the epilepsy foundation that's willing to come and, uh, accept the resolution and say a few words.
Okay, take a motion to approve this?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
And a resolution recognizing Dr. Laura Schweitzer, who was named as the professional woman of the year.
Yep, uh, Dr. Schweitzer was named the woman of the year by the Schenectady professional businesswoman, and, um, again, it would be nice to recognize that in the city of Schenectady too, and she has certainly had an impact in the, uh, the city itself at the end graduate college. And she's retiring, so another good reason to celebrate her accomplishments.
Agreed.
So I'll move that.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, ceremonial resolution for Small Business Saturday.
Uh, being a former small business owner, I can say, this means a lot to me, uh, small business is really the backbone of our city and our community as a whole, so I'm happy. If there's no questions to come, let's move this.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ceremonial resolution recognizing the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association.
I'll expand it right here.
Okay, okay. Entertain a motion to approve that?
Uh, I'll move it.
Okay. Okay, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, ceremonial resolution recognizing the actor, writer, and director, and I'm never gonna pronounce it right, Mr. Mudd.
Mahadhir Shabraj.
That's us. I've got that down now.
Yes, he actually, uh, we can work, myself and some other worked on him to get him to unveil his latest movie in Schenectady, which is gonna happen November, uh, the thirtieth, five P M. at Praktis G E Theater.
I think I can move that.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we'll move on to the D S A D budget presentation for 2015. Mr. Solango? There you are.
I've got our assistant director, if we need her. But yeah, we're just here to present the, um, the 2015 D S A D budget, and as you recall, the, the D S A D budget is the portion of our overall annual operating budget that comes from the commercial properties located in downtown. Um, just as a quick reminder, uh, the non-for-profit downtown Schenectady improver corporation where we work, uh, we do the things in downtown, supplemental programs and services to benefit downtown throughout the year, the sidewalk cleaning, litter and leaf removals, snow clearing at intersections and crosswalks, which appears to be coming sooner than we can. Uh, the hanging flower baskets, holiday decorations going up, online marketing events promotions, all that for downtown. So, uh, since two thousand seven, uh, the total amount of the fees that we collected from the D S A D has remained pretty much steady at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But that's, um, over eight years, downtown has grown tremendously, um, and the responsibilities of the D S I C have increased as well based on the new infrastructure, all the new people and all the new activities, so, um, working on our budget for this year, the D S I C board has approved a total D S A D fees for 2015 of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. These additional funds will go to a lot of things that we can, uh, do in 2015 to really reflect the changes in the growth of the district. I had sent you some, a notice with some of the, the items on there, additional flower baskets, banners, wreaths, um, additional resources for our door maintenance program, better website, more communications assistant, things of that nature, so, um, we will be sending out information to all the D S A D property owners, informing them of our, um, of the, uh, the budget that we passed for, uh, 2015 and what the impact would be on their commercial properties, so. Any questions?
Questions. Ms. Porterhill.
Are there, um, do you, are there any fees paid by the businesses downtown?
Not directly.
Not directly?
Yeah, they're paid, I mean, um, yeah, the D S A D is, is for the commercial, you know, business improvement, just for the commercial properties in the district. And no residential either, um, included in that, unless it's commercial or residential, anything for units and above is considered an apartment building, yeah.
Ms. Drighy.
What is the impact percentage wise, Jim? Does it, I, I'm a little confused, it's for some it's less, for some it's more?
Yeah, 'cause it's not a, it's not a, it's not a tax rate as you're used to doing for the city where it's X dollars per thousand dollars of, of assessed value. It's really based on the, um, the different fees, how they're distributed are based on the, on the square footage of the properties, how much frontage they have and where they're located in the districts, distributed, and we base it on the demand of, of our services in the district, so we have, um, the three different, you know, a one, two, and a three demand area as well, so that's how the.
What's the range then on the increase?
It goes from anywhere from eight dollars, you know, which is the proposed participation fee, is an increase of eight dollars, which more than half of the properties within downtown Schenectady will just see an eight dollar increase to their overall annual assessment, by the way, so this is an annual figure, um, and then the other portions are, uh, ranged, levied, they divvy up the remaining portion that isn't derived by the two hundred and sixty-eight dollar, so on average, because, uh, Councilman Porazo asked this question, so averages based on dollar figures, demand area one, which is the highest demand area, sees an average assessment increase of a hundred and eighty-seven dollars annually again, uh, demand area two, which is just a step down from that, um, their average annual assessment increase will be a hundred and twenty-two dollars, and demand area three, which is the lowest demand area, will see an average assessment increase of thirty-seven dollars, and those again are averages based off of how many parcels and pieces of property are in those areas, so, but again, the majority of the properties within the entire downtown special assessment district, uh, more than half will only see an eight dollar increase based off of the participation fee only increasing by eight dollars, so it's a rate. It's a hard, it's a hard thing because again, it isn't a rate, it is a wholesale dollar figure that is then apportioned based on those factors.
Two question, one is, in your budget you have three categories, can you help me to understand, um, the environmental section in this budget? What is this about, seeing that you have a, a large, uh, portion going towards salary and benefits, what is that really about?
Yeah. Yeah, well, the salary benefits, that's the three, um, I think in the email that Jim sent, there's three full-time outside employees, their entire, um, staffing is directed towards the things we talked about, the snow removal at the intersections, leaf pickup graffiti, um, the banners, the holiday decorations, the litter, it's seven days a week program.
So they'll follow the environmental enhancement.
That's all.
And there's some portion of our time.
And then again, then there's the.
In administering the program as well.
But the salary level is high, higher there because you have three full-time people dedicated to just that program.
My other question is that, um, you're picking up the difference from your ex, uh, income versus your expenditure by the two thousand and fourteen parking payments, what is that?
Yes, um, but in two thousand and four, the city of Schenectady, through memorandum of understanding, we disposed of the surface parking lots to Metroplex, and there was an asset, a twenty million dollar asset, well, a million dollar asset that pays itself over, that's not twenty million, million dollar asset that pays itself down over.
Can it be twenty?
Yeah, I wish it were twenty, no, over, over twenty years, so every year in July, there's a fifty thousand dollar payment, we took the asset in two thousand and four, so what you see is the interest revenue on the income side, and then the portion that, uh, is part of the asset to add, so those two numbers on the budget will add to the fifty thousand, because we can't put that in the income side.
So those parking funds will go to the bottom line to help balance the budget at the bottom.
Yeah, but in, uh.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking, because you have this monetary versus this monetary, and then you took the parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that helps us balance it.
Yeah, and then, uh, twenty twenty-three will be the last payment by the city for that parking, so that, that will like, it'll sunset in twenty twenty-three, will be the last year that that exists, so that million dollar asset will be, uh, fully paid.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we have a public hearing on Monday, and then we'll take action on this the following.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay, item number seven, Community Builders, talking here about.
Community Builders is here to talk about the Hiltside View apartment proposal for Hamilton Hill neighborhood, Jonathan, you wanna introduce yourself and?
Yes. Hi, my name is Jennifer Petracup, I'm the, uh, project manager for the Community Builders, our Albany office, and this is Kelsey Hanny, development associate out of our office in Albany as well. We're here, according to this evening, to present our development proposal, Hiltside View, um, we're also seeking a positive resolution to purchase ten city-owned properties. I wanna mention before we get started that we also, we went before the zoning board, um, and we received a unanimous positive vote, uh, for our variance requests there, so, um, with that we'll get started. So T C B is a, the Community Builders is a nonprofit organization, our mission is to build and sustain strong communities where people of all incomes can achieve their full potential. We work, we've been in existence since nineteen sixty-four, we were formed in Boston, uh, we work currently in fourteen states and the District of Columbia, um, and in that fifty year period, we have produced or developed, uh, twenty-five thousand units of housing, and, uh, we own, we manage, currently we manage ten thousand of those. In addition, we have, um, developed four hundred and twenty square feet of commercial space, um, and we have a community life programs where we, um, have placed two thousand residents and jobs and returned sixteen point seven million dollars, uh, to communities through earned income tax credits. Um, just a little snapshot of what we've done, um, on the national stage, um, that would be applicable to what we're trying to do in, in Hamilton Hill, um, we've developed Oakwood Shores, um, which was, uh, we developed, de-identifying, uh, three thousand units of public housing, um, and creating senior and family rental and ownership units, um, along with, um, elementary school and, um, exercise, uh, facilities. We have done the development in, in the Bronzeville neighborhood in Chicago, um, this area in Chicago has been a food desert for the over fifty years, um, and we just, uh, hosted a ribbon cutting literally just like a month and a half ago to open up our new shops and loft developments, which, uh, pulled in, um, an anchor, um, food retail store and provides, uh, seventy-two rental units of, uh, apartment rental units. And then closer to home is our, um, development that we did in partnership with the Hartford Housing Authority, Dutch Point, um, which was a one hundred and eighty-five unit Hope Six revitalization. So I should mention that Sue McCann, who is my supervisor, she is running late to this meeting, but she initiated both Oakwood Shores and the Dutch Point redevelopment in Hartford, so, she is, uh, my supervisor and will be overseeing the work that we do in the cap region. Um, our history in Schenectady, we, we developed in two thousand and three, uh, we developed forty units of, uh, family rental housing, um, in Vale, uh, where we took twenty abandoned duplexes, um, and created forty new units of quality housing that people can afford to live in. This contributes currently thirty-two, over thirty-two thousand, um, a year in taxes, and maintains quality housing options for, for the residents of Schenectady. So these are some of the before and after shots, um, of our development in Vale, uh, this is, this is the current condition today, again, seventeen Catherine Street, um, and this was just taken this summer, um, these are our properties currently, so this, these have been owned and in operation for over ten years. So our interest is very much in, in maintaining our housing, um, to continue to provide quality, affordable housing options for the life of, of the rental unit. So, we're here specifically tonight to, um, talk to you about, um, our offer to purchase ten, um, properties that are currently, uh, vacant and abandoned or boarded up or, uh, vacant parcels that the city owns, um, these are mainly along Stanley and Emmett Streets with two on, um, Craig Street, these city, um, these properties are currently not producing any income for, for the, uh, city, we're proposing to purchase these properties for twenty-one thousand dollars, um, and in addition to the twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, as the purchase price, the city would avoid the demolition costs of three two-family buildings totaling ninety thousand dollars. So to kind of give you a sense of, of what we're, what we're trying to do here, um, the ten, uh, city parcels will be incorporated into, along with the two, um, the abandoned school, the Horace Mann Elementary School at six oh two Craig Street, and the school at four hundred Craig, um, this will be, in total, a sixty-unit, uh, family and senior rental housing development, um, so these are the, the city-owned parcels are here, and here, um, the dots indicate, um, existing buildings to be demolished, um, so there's two here that we would be demolishing, and one, um, at eight oh nine Emmett Street, um, those would be the, where the city would save the demo costs, um, new construction is indicated by the orange dots, um, and rehabbing the existing buildings of the schools, and then three two-family buildings, duplexes along, um, Stanley Street. So the goal is to, um, really concentrate our redevelopment efforts really block by block to realize, um, a substantial revitalization, a lasting revitalization along Craig, Emmett, and Stanley Streets. So included in your handouts is an expanded map, um, kind of a larger map, eleven by seventeen map, and you can see, um, the, these properties in their current condition more clearly, I don't know that you have one here.
Yes.
So this is, help you to see it a little bit better. Uh, so again, this just, um, shows pictures of the, of the units that, um, in their current condition, as you can see, they're all boarded up and have a present of lighting condition on the, on Stanley Street and Emmett Streets, um, and, as well as six oh two Craig Street. So we would, um, just to walk you through a little bit of the proposal, um, at six oh two Craig Street, we're proposing twenty-six units of, um, housing for seniors, um, in the four hundred Craig Street buildings, we're proposing thirteen units of family housing, um, the rehabs will, uh, be two units each of the three rehabs, and then, um, new construction on Stanley, um, and at this parcel here on, I mean, excuse me, at Emmett, and this parcel here on Stanley, and then a six-unit building here on the other side of Stanley. For a total of sixty units, um, again, a mix of, uh, senior and family housing, so twenty-six dedicated to seniors and thirty-four to families. So just a quick program overview, again, we'll be creating sixty units of one to three-bedroom quality apartments that people can afford to live in, um, the apartments, um, will include, for the six oh two and the four hundred Craig Street buildings will include A D A compliant, um, elevators, we will have, each have, uh, two community rooms, which will be accessible, uh, by all, um, there will be a playground and green space that will be expect, uh, accessible to the community at large and maintained by T C B, um, and we can get into the site plan, um, in a later slide, but it'll be behind the four hundred Craig Street building with pathways from either Stanley or Emmett for the larger communities' access. The estimated construction cost will be fourteen point four million dollars, um, this will be, uh, these construction opportunities will be at, be paying Davis Bacon prevailing wage rates, um, we, uh, our goal is to contract with thirty percent minority business enterprises and ten percent women business enterprises, uh, which is higher currently than the, uh, Schenectady County, uh, projections or goals, targets, this is a, a T C B, uh, standard goal that we try to hit for every one of our developments across the nation. Um, so this is the site plan for our four hundred Craig Street, and we put it in here just to call out that, um, we'll be retaining this green space at the rear of four hundred Craig Street, it's kind of hard to see in this, um, projection, but this is Stanley Street, and there is a pathway from Stanley Street to the playgrounds, and Emmett Street, a pathway to, um, the playground from Emmett Street. Our property management offices will be located on the ground floor of this building here, um, and have views on the property and be accessible by residents and the community at large for, um, you know, questions, concerns. Again, this will, uh, rehabs here, here, and here, um, this will be a four-unit building, this will be a six-unit building, um, a two-unit building, and a four-unit building, um, those, these are all new construction here. Um, this is an example of, uh, our proposed elevation for the six-unit building on the north side of Stanley Street, um, so two, two-unit apartments, uh, one bedroom and a three-bedroom, and then two two-unit apartments here, for a total of six apartments. And this would be the, the rear elevation, so each apartment would have their own access to, um, to eat, to the, to the yard, and in this case, to access to the, to the playground. Just an overview for our expected timeline for the development, um, we'll be submitting a funding application to, um, Homes and Community Renewal on December fourth, um, we're forecasting that all of our funding will be in place by, um, the end of August, upon which time we'll, um, proceed with, um, our permitting and start construction by the middle of September, um, construction completion within the December of the following year, so twenty sixteen, um, and start, we'll start marketing prior to that, um, and forecast the, um, hundred percent occupancy by the end of December of twenty sixteen. We anticipate that, that this will be a part of a second phase of development, um, with the goal of drawing, um, major downtown investment through the Albany Street corridor, um, to potentially include mixed-use and development, we've heard that, um, you know, there's a need for a grocery store in Hamilton Hill, um, mixed income and affordable housing and supportive resident services for, for, um, the residents of, um, our development, so.
Questions? It's like an exciting project.
Yes. Tell us about, uh, how you generally market your properties?
We, um, we market through, uh, local, local papers, um, uh, Craigslist, we have all sorts of postings that we do, we also accept referrals, um, from organizations that we're working with, um, in, uh, in Hamilton Hill and in Schenectady, um, so those are some of the ways that we market our units. And Sue just walked in, Sue McCann, this is our development director for New York and New Jersey.
Mr. Mudd Baron.
Your funding source, you mentioned a home and community renewal, can you tell me more about them, and where they located?
So the, um, so New York State Homes and Community Renewal, they're in. So the, so New York State Homes and Community Renewal, their main office is here in Albany. We will be seeking low-income housing tax credits, historic tax credits, and community development block rent funding through that state agency.
Is it 100% financing through this agency?
It's, it's not 100%. Well, there's, there's other potential sources, but we haven't been, we haven't received notification of funding award yet, so potentially yes, potentially no.
So your intention is to go beyond this agency?
Right, so we have an application that will be going in, asking for 100% of our financing through HCR. If we're awarded these other funds, then we will contribute those funds to the development.
Yes.
One of the other sources that we have for the development is called the Neighborhood Revitalization Program.
Right.
And the community builders is already committed to that in the amount of...
$1.25 million. So that's, yeah.
Our organization is a large national nonprofit, and as such, we got a grant when stimulus funding was being given out about 2010, I believe, for 78 million. And we're putting a million or two, Jennifer, in this development of that amount. So that will be from our organization directly.
So $1.5 million from your organization?
$1.25.
$1.25?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Just to make a comment, believe it or not, I was on the city council when Sharon Jordan and back in 2002 with the Vail neighborhood projects and just an absolutely wonderful turnaround that entire community. And I didn't realize that was your work behind it, so I know you've got some projects out there that are very successful. Regarding the Boys and Girls Club, what's their timetable and what are they looking to relocate or what are their plans to move that club somewhere?
If we get our financing from, this is a competitive application, and if we're lucky enough to get awarded our grant, we have a purchase option with the Boys and Girls Club, which will give them until September of 2015, Jennifer, to solidify their plans for their relocated spots. They're looking at two or three sites right now and hope to have the final decision made in the next couple of months about which one of the cities that was fired. They, I usually want to be closer to the schools so that the kids don't have to walk as far to get to the after-school activities.
Very good. And again, another very important organization, I know the mayor's been working, I think, regarding Quackenbush Park area, possible relocation.
We've had some discussions with them, possible options, and those discussions are just starting to go.
Yeah, I think it's a great option. And again, when I was on the Board of Education just recently too, we were talking about with Pleasant Valley being right there, they were looking about possibly doing addition on the PV with the cafeteria and additional classrooms and daycare center with the boys. I think just there'd be a wonderful partnership. We can tie that all in together, working with the school, possibly getting the school aid for that building, letting them use it during the day and then Boys and Girls Club at night. But I just think it's a great project and I plan on coming to the meeting tomorrow night as well to show support on my end as well.
I was going to ask Sharon Jordan if you wanted to comment at all, because I know you've worked with these folks too, as Ed pointed out.
I have the community buildings for 10 years now and a great organization. And I think this project is kind of a building block for the revitalization of Hamilton Hill. And I'm very excited about the project and hoping that they will get a reward.
Ms. Porterfield?
I just want to say that, you know, we've met with community builders, we've been discussing with them, you know, just discussions maybe some concerns that were in the neighborhood. But overall, I could say I'm really excited and looking forward to the revitalization. And my hope then is that it will bring some other things into the neighborhood as well. And, you know, because it's a corner that without this project, we do have a couple of empty buildings. We already have two, at least 53 with Boys and Girls Club, who have said they're moving anyway. So I'm looking forward to the project moving ahead and, you know, some of the revitalization that's going to bring to the neighborhood.
This is a question. You mentioned that you took 20 abandoned properties and rehabbed them. Are these properties still under the community builders?
Yes, we're still managing them.
Are they all full?
Yeah, they, we occasionally have somebody move out, but they are basically full.
We have residents that have been there and were original tenants and are still there.
And most of the residents come right from right here in Schenectady. We looked at where our population comes from, and it comes mostly from right here in Schenectady, a few from adjoining cities.
Thank you. Just so add to that, I'd like to welcome you guys to take the initiative to come to Schenectady and invest.
It's a great place to be. I've enjoyed meeting people and getting to know the local organizations, because I think a lot of people are doing a lot of good work, but there's a lot remaining to be done.
Ms. Porterfield?
Jennifer, you just mentioned, you didn't talk too much about the property management, but people understand that the property managers at the sites.
Yes, yeah, we have onsite property management staff.
We have an office right there.
Right.
The other thing that was on the slide, because there's some misconception about who's going to live in the house, where people are going to come from and all that, but on one of the slides, it specifically says in Vail right now, 78% of the people that live there are employed. So it's not like there's people who are just doing services. There's some misconception of it. I just want to clarify that.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, people hear the word affordable housing and they think they have bad images in their head, which aren't necessarily true.
And just to follow up on that, you mentioned seniors and families only. I mean, how do you categorize them, senior?
Senior is 62 and above. And they've been... The Craig, the 602 Craig Street building, I'm getting closer. The, the seniors 62 and above and the 25 units in the 602 Craig Street building would be for the fat population exclusively. The other properties, the Boys and Girls Club school building, plus the buildings, the scattered buildings we'll be rehabbing and building new, will be for families. But when I say families, that really in today's world, you know, there's less and less of mom, dad, and two kids. And families come in all, you know, shapes and sizes these days. And sometimes that means, you know, a grandmother and a grandchild or a grandmother and a mother. So not exclusively elderly, but not necessarily mom, dad, and two kids and a dog.
Okay. The other question, we mentioned 400 Craig Street, you're going to be having a neighborhood community center?
There'll be two community rooms, yes. But one in 400 Craig Street and one in 602 Craig Street.
Just open space for meetings or would there be any?
Yeah, so the, those rooms will include a kitchenette. And I know specifically in 602, it will also include a computer lab space. So they are open for a larger community use during business hours.
And by request?
And by request at other times, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. And then, so what we're going to be voting on is to authorize the mayor to donate the two lots of vacant property for which the community builders will pay associated local fees and also authorize the mayor to sell the identified eight city-owned or foreclosed properties contingent upon the community builders receiving state funding to carry out their proposed project. So, okay, Ms. Porterfield?
Second.
Second. Ms. Porazo, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations and thank you. Okay, then we've got, we have two public hearings coming up on the sale of tobacco products and convenience stores and second-hand cell phone stores. Do we need any other discussion about that?
That's up to you, the legislation in the clerk's office for the public to get a hold of and review if they want. You just go, obviously, in front of the county council on spelling.
Okay. All right, so we don't need to take any action on these. So if there's nothing else to come before city development and planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Porterfield? Ms. Porazo? Second, all in favor?
Aye. Now, call government operations on order. The whole item is the appointment of John Ferrari, his to cancel. That's clean.
Mr. Ferrari has won the election and rather than having that seat since he's vacant, I think it's our responsibility to move forward and get Mr. Ferrari on board.
Questions, comments?
If I may as well, do we, do we need to speak of moving our time off of swearing in at 6:30?
I was going to do that.
You can do that at a different time?
What our planning is going to be, that I'll convene the city council at 6:30 on Monday night for Mr. Ferrari swearing in. We'll recess for about 15 minutes to come down here for a reception.
And a possible.
Yeah. And then, and then we'll go back up and start the city council caucus at 7:00.
At 7:00?
Yeah. So it'll be, so it'll be 6:30 upstairs. Yep. And then down here for a brief time and then back up.
Other questions, comments? Certainly healthy for us to have every seat full, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Looking forward to it.
All right, so I'm looking for...
I would like to move it.
John and a second, Mr. Koshar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Any other business to come before government operations this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, do I have a second on motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, call to order public safety. There are two items on the agenda. Chief Senate.
Hold on, hold on. Public safety.
You took it?
I did.
Did you fire him? I'm firing him? Wow! Let me send him a memo, you know.
She is using the fire truck.
Are you anxious for the fire truck?
Public service, public safety.
I did that last time. That's what I did, too.
Call to order public safety. Item number one, ordering two fire apparatus, pumper and one mid-munk aerial platform. Chief Senate.
Good evening. Possibly 15 years ago, we started leasing fire apparatus. And basically what this is, in continuation of that, we have two engines, hopefully well, and one aerial device that went to bid. And we have the bidding period. So basically, again, this was started by Chief Farstad several years ago for cost-saving measures with the fire apparatus, the state age, with the pumps that we have, electronics and valving and whatnot, very expensive to repair. Our aerial trucks now carry the jaws. They're hydraulic, they're electronic, they have a pump. Very costly to repair. Downtime is important to us. You can't have an aerial down for a month or even two at some point. Our engine companies, as it's been well-spoken, especially recently, they're the busiest in the state, if not the nation. Our backup apparatus is getting older, so we really can't afford to have our apparatus down. And this has worked well for us. We're able to budget our yearly costs. There's no surprises as far as repairs. Again, labor nowadays is well over $100 an hour. Again, with electronics, hydraulics, pumps, all the equipment that these pieces carry, any one of those factors will put that apparatus down, which obviously has an effect on our operation. So they went to bid, as they always do, and our bids came back. Took the lowest bids for the engines and we had one bidder on the truck.
Any questions?
Is there any particular reason that we only had the one bid on the truck?
Well, it's a good question. We usually have two. We only had one this time. It's a, it's a pretty involved piece and we spec it. There are needs here in the city. Obviously, we have the stockade area, there's certain things that we have to have. We run paramedics on the truck also, so we need specific compartment sizes which house our equipment. So it's not something that you just can shop in a lot, if you will, so it's pretty specific. We were a little disappointed we only had one bidder also. But I will point out that the bid that we have is actually cheaper than what we're paying right now for the piece that we had, so I wouldn't disappoint you with that.
Any other questions?
Do we have expected time and delivery, chief?
It was a 10, 10-month, like one-year lead build time, so we're talking about this time next year.
Okay. Ready for the Christmas party?
I hope so.
Any other questions?
I'll move it, Mr.
This is a good price for three pieces of apparatus.
Yeah, sure. I'll move it, John.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, we got one more. We have the lease, two fire apparatus, pumper and one mid-munk aerial platform.
It's all together, yes. It's two items.
Two items.
Two items, so I'll move that.
Three items, two trucks.
Two trucks.
So I'll move that.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, chief.
Any other business for public safety?
The chief's here, a question for the chief. I'm reading a report today about Troy having a problem with their paramedics and firemen with bedbugs. Do we have a plan in place? Because they have to be deloused. There seems to be a real big problem.
Well, if we're on top of that, I can see that article also, keeping in mind that Troy runs an ambulance service, so they're actually transporting patients or stretchers and residents. You know, something that we don't have to deal with. But we do have, we have washers and dryers in the station, and it's something that we've been looking at and we've been on top of, because there's not a city in the United States that's, you know, in issue with that. I did, I did notice that. We had a meeting last week with all our party partners, we met in Albany, it was one of our topics.
Any other business for public safety?
I move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Call to order claims. All these, maintain motion going to executive session.
So I'll move that, okay. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
And let Mr. Ferrari stay in the room since he will be voting on some of this next week.